I think we are on.
Yes, we are on.
Thank you, everyone. I will bring the meeting of the July 20th, 2020 San Carlos Planning Commission to order. Please join me within the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're getting that down.
Lisa, if I could please have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Yakapony.
Here, here.
Commissioner Dugan.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Ruth.
Here.
And Chair Garvey.
Here. All right, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 549, 54.2. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report.
So through the chair, we're just going to wait a couple of minutes to see if anyone from the public would like to call in and speak to a matter that is not on the agenda. And should they wish to do so, the number that they would dial is 1301-715-8592, as it shows here on this screen. And when prompted, the meeting ID is 238-262-027. So we'll wait just a minute and see if anyone has called in. And then I will turn it over to Sarah to let us know if there's any public comments. Sarah, do we have anyone?
Not at this time.
Well, let's give it another 30 more seconds and see if anybody wants to call in.
Yes.
Lisa, Sarah, anyone in the waiting room?
Nobody in the waiting room.
All right, let's move on to our next item then. Agenda item number five, the approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes from the July 6, 2020 meeting. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any changes to the minutes?
I do not. They look good to me.
None for me.
None for me.
None for me.
And none for me. Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move we approve the minutes for July 6, 2020.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye, aye.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey.
Yes. All right, moving on to agenda item number six, which is a presentation, introduction to the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan. Lisa?
Yes, I am going to be turning this particular item over to Adam Locar, who is our Sustainability Coordinator out of the City Manager's Office. And if I've made any mistakes, Adam, you can properly introduce yourself. Adam is working with a team of consultants on this project and he will be giving the presentation this evening. So with that, I will turn it over to Adam and Adam, just let me know when you would like me to advance to the next slide.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you, Lisa. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Locar. I'm a management analyst and sustainability specialist in the City Manager's Office. As Lisa just said, today, I'm just here to give you a really brief introduction to our Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan project and really to invite you to participate in some of the virtual workshops that we have coming up as well. So what this, this project is, it's a, it's a long-term strategic plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in San Carlos and to build resiliency to some climate-related hazards. Next slide. So we do have an existing climate action plan. It was adopted in 2009 along with the general plan update. It's a strategic plan. It adheres to CEQA guidelines and it set the target of reducing our emissions 15% below 2005 levels by this year, by 2020. And to do that, it identified 21 measures to achieve that target. And I'm happy to say, as of our 2018 inventory, we were kind of working on a two-year delay with a lot of these greenhouse gas inventories. We were approximately 25% below 2005 levels, measuring our, from our whole community greenhouse gas emissions. So these results obviously put us on a really good track to meet, we've already exceeded that 15% goal and it's likely that we'll meet it once we get the 2020 inventories done in a few years. So the, the San Carlos Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, we're calling it the CMAP. What it will do is it will establish new long-term greenhouse gas reduction goals for 2030 and 2050. And these are going to be consistent with state targets which have changed since our original climate action plan. It'll also develop new greenhouse gas reduction policies that kind of build off of the existing successes of the previous plan and take advantage of some new opportunities. New to this plan is going to be incorporating climate adaptation planning, meaning we will identify the threats that San Carlos faces due to climate change and identify new strategies to adapt to those threats and to promote resiliency. So this plan will really go hand in hand and be referenced within the safety element update to the general plan. And it will add an addendum to the general plan environmental impact report. Our timeline has been thrown off a little bit as everything in this world right now with COVID. So right now, just kind of this winter and into summer, we've been doing a lot of technical work, just getting those inventories done and doing some assessments of our vulnerabilities. Heading into late summer and into the fall is when we'll do some kind of our first round of, of community outreach and start drafting strategies. Heading into the winter and then we're looking to hopefully complete this project in winter and spring of 2021. We will be coming back to, to you all later in this project to seek feedback. And at that time, we'll have our technical consultants with, with me as well. We can kind of go dive into more of the details then. For our engagement, we will be engaging with the community at many different times throughout this project and through as many means as possible that are not person-to-person and are COVID-safe as are listed here. We're just entering the first phase of community outreach now. So you should all expect a spotlight newsletter in your mailbox that kind of goes into this project in more detail. And I'm here today to formally invite you all to participate in one of the climate action workshops that we have scheduled. One on August 26th and one on October 1st. Both of these will be online via Zoom and they'll feature the same agenda. They'll provide kind of an overview presentation of the project and some of the things completed. And then we'll move into kind of breakout rooms where we can have participants discuss and share their feedback and ideas. So I would encourage all of you, if you're interested in this project and want to register, the commissioners and anyone from the public watching, to go to cityofsancarlos.org/cclimate. And with that, I wanted, I said I'd be brief, but with that, I want to thank you all for, for having me over today. You can go back, Lisa, actually. Yeah, perfect. Yep, that's perfect. And if you have any questions, let me know. My email address is there. And again, if you want to learn more about the project and register, feel free to visit that website.
Yeah, Adam, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. I've, the chart that showed that nice declining emissions from our fair city. Always nice to see a chart like that. And I guess I've always wanted to ask someone who knows more about this than I do. And I guess, Adam, you're the lucky one. How on earth does a city like San Carlos measure these emissions throughout the whole city?
Yeah, that's, it's a good question. It's, well, with energy data, we get that from PG&E. So they'll, you know, we request it and they'll send us a big bulk file with all the energy consumption and corresponding greenhouse gas emissions for things like electricity consumption and natural gas use for both, you can see it broken down there for both commercial, non-residential and residential. Other sectors, it's a little bit more tricky. That's a really great question for some of the transportation and other items that our technical consultants could answer later. But I can say it's a complicated mess of grabbing a bunch of variables from a bunch of different transportation agencies and putting them into models for some of the transportation-related data, which is that other big yellow chunk.
Fair enough, yeah. But a lot of the big bars, it's just a matter of the utilities cooperating and providing a roll-up of how much energy has flowed into the community. Is that one way to understand it?
Yeah, for the orange and gray bars, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, Adam. Jim Yakapony here. Maybe I'll follow on to John's question. It looks like the, as you point out, the orange and the gray bars, the change in those have driven a lot of the overall change. Does PG&E have a view as to what has been driving that? Is it adoption of solar energy? Is it more efficient buildings or appliances? I mean, what, what would they say?
Yeah, that's, you kind of hit the two there. I think two of it, part of it is, is the continued progress in the electrical code and that buildings built today are just built to a much higher standard. They're much more energy efficient, both residential and non-residential. The, the other side of that is the continued adoption of renewables onto the grid. Locally here in San Mateo County, I think you could look in 2016 to that big drop is when the creation of Peninsula Clean Energy with the, the Joint Powers Authority that procures energy for, for all San Mateo County residents. And for us, if you, if you haven't opted out of anything, your default is, is 90% greenhouse gas-free electricity and it's 50% renewable. So as you can see, that, that takes a huge chunk of the carbon intensity out of our electricity. So most of those emissions left over in the residential and non-residential, basically buildings, is from natural gas.
Great, thank you. That was really helpful. If I could, a follow-on would be, as we look ahead to the next 20 years, in your work, will you be looking at the expected levels of growth in the community, both in the housing? We know we're going to be looking at a couple of larger housing developments as well as increases in commercial activity and factoring those in as things we need to offset?
Yeah, we've, we've already, we've met with, with Lisa and the, the MIG team and are looking at that. I know that, you know, this, our greenhouse gas emission forecasts are likely going to be dependent on, on growth that we're going to foresee in the coming years. And so definitely something we're, we're thinking about and considering. These plans aren't set in stone. They're intended to be updated with regularity. Our consultants usually recommend every five years to kind of revisit them and, and hit a refresh on some of the numbers. And, and so definitely want to, we'll be considering that as we, we develop this plan.
Thank you.
Adam, Don Bradley here. You can't see me and I can't see you, but I heard you. And would you just repeat the two dates of the public meetings?
No problem. Yeah, they are August 26th, which is a Wednesday, and October 1st, which is a Thursday. And they're both in the evening at 6:30 PM and they'll be on Zoom.
Thank you very much.
Adam, David here. I have a question on the, the transportation segment seems to be holding pretty constant, which considering, I gather, the city has been growing somewhat over this period. So maybe that's, that's still a good thing. But how much of that is Highway 101 traffic versus local? Is, and is that just vehicle traffic? Is that what transportation means?
Transportation is actually, it's, yeah, on-road traffic, off-road track, off-road fuel consumption too. So things like, you know, landscaping equipment, things like that. And then also public transportation is incorporated in that as well. And, and, you know, it, it has to do with how VMT is, is measured and defined. I, I, again, I'll have to defer to our consultants when we, when we come back to you, they can answer that in more detail. As I said, whether it's, is pass-through considered, traffic considered in this, or is it just local emissions? I'm not quite sure.
Yes, it's hard for the city to do too much about the traffic on Highway 101.
Exactly. Want to focus on what we have a lot of control over. But I will say our, our most, our most recent numbers is, you might expect, our vehicle miles traveled from 2005 to 2018 has increased. As you can imagine, just with more people and people driving further. But our CO2 emissions have actually seen a drop. And that's largely due to the increased fuel economy, fuel efficiency of vehicles and the adoption of electric vehicles. So, what encouraging.
Yep. Yeah, as a planning commission, it seems like the transportation and encouraging new development to minimize the impact there is one thing we can potentially do as the planning commission is my initial thought. A lot of the energy efficiency that's kind of built in according to the code, it's a little outside of our purview. Those yellow ones, maybe we can get those smaller going forward.
Well, and as, and building on that, we just approved a project a month or so ago that was an all-electric building, which I think is one of the ways that we as a planning commission can have an impact on, on the energy sector. But I, I agree with you, Commissioner Ruth, that the biggest sector is, is transportation. And I, I'll note that many of the projects we look at have electric vehicle capabilities, electric vehicle charging stations built into the project, which I think only bodes well for the future and a reduction of emissions. Adam, I did get the Spotlight in the mail. It's a really nice document. I have a feeling you, you prepared that. Not only a good presentation tonight, but I really enjoyed reading the Spotlight. It was really very clear. And yes, I'm looking forward to participating and being involved with the workshops.
Thank you.
Any other questions from fellow commissioners of Adam?
Thank you, Adam.
All right, Adam. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, moving on to item number seven. The next item is a public hearing and I'm going to read the procedure for a public hearing now. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or in the written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form found by, found by the door, although we'll clarify that in a little bit. I think there's a phone process. The speaker should come to the microphone, in this case, the phone, to speak since the meeting is being recorded. And this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Let's see, the first hearing item is 7A, 1280 Alameda de los Pogos, 051131300, PLN 2020-00095, a request for design review approval for a new fire station building. Staff?
Good evening. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. I will start the staff presentation. The item before you tonight is consideration of design review for a new Fire Station 16. Subject site is just over 10,000 square feet in area located at the corner of Howard Avenue and Alameda de los Pogos. The site slopes upward from the west, excuse me, to the west from Alameda. The site contains an existing single-story, 3,740-square-foot fire station. The site is located within the single-family residential zoning and general plan land use designation. The existing fire station was constructed in 1959 and houses one crew, which includes three firefighters on a shift, as well as two fire apparatus vehicles. The firehouse is dated and does not meet current codes or needs of the fire station operations. The city council authorized the project during its 2018-2020 budget process and retained an architectural firm to prepare plans in August of 2019. The request is to city plans on demolishing the existing fire station building and improvements and constructing a new 5,797-square-foot, two-story fire station building. The project complies with the city's municipal code standards and requires design review approval from the planning commission. Here's the proposed site plan. The building is shifted a bit towards Alameda de los Pogos and the site will be lowered about three feet to the building pad to reduce the grade from the driveway on Alameda, as well as reduce the overall height of the building. You can see that the substantial landscaping is retained at the corner and there's a new entry facing Howard Avenue. Six onsite parking spaces are provided. That includes 180 space. A generator is located within a sound insulated enclosure and the rear parking area and apron is screened from view with a solid fence and gate. New trash area is also located within a solid enclosure and bicycle parking is provided near the front door. The design of the building is contemporary architectural style with a brick base and vertical siding on the upper level with large eve overhangs and windows with dark mullions. The front door, as well as the apparatus door, propose to be glass with red trim. The architect's presentation will review the design of the building in more detail. The project complies with the city's objective code standards and is consistent with the city's design review criteria. City retained a consultant to prepare an initial study and evaluate the project pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. And that analysis determined that the project complies for an exemption under CEQA Guidelines 15302, which involves the replacement or reconstruction of structures and facilities where the new structure will be located on the same site for substantially the same purpose. City staff and the design team held a community outreach meeting in March of this year at the Fire Station Building to review the proposed design. Notification of this meeting was mailed citywide to all residents. We estimate 25 people attended the meeting, which included several immediate neighbors and comments on the design were generally favorable from the community. Public notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the site on July 7th and published in the newspaper on July 9th. Staff has not received any comments on the project as of this evening. This is the formal motion, should you choose to make it after conducting the public hearing. I will now hand it off to Chief Lax, who will review the project a bit from an operational perspective. And then he will hand it off to the project architect, who can review the design for you in further detail. And we're all available for questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Chuck Lax, your acting deputy fire chief. We could advance the slide to the next slide. There we go. So just a little update on our current conditions with Fire Station 16. It's a one-story building. And I believe it went into service in 1960, constructed in 1959. We did go through a very extensive remodel in 1990. We did the bathrooms, the kitchen, converted the dorm room to individual bedrooms, really brought the station up to date back in 1990. And then, as you could see in the picture, some of the current condition of the rooms, the living room, the bedrooms, the kitchen, the bathroom. Next slide. So some of the deficiencies with the facility are, the structure does not support our current needs. The building is deteriorating and the needs, need significant upgrades. We also need to meet, the building does not meet the building codes and seismic standards for a public safety building. The rising maintenance and repair costs for the facility continue to rise. And as you could see in this picture with the fire engine, we just purchased this engine about a year and a half ago. It just made it into the station. Of course, we did some measuring before we ordered the engine. But this station was the limiting factor for the height of the apparatuses that we had to buy for several of our other stations as well. So it did have some impact on that. Next slide. So to kind of go into some health and safety concerns that we have, just to let you know, firefighters have a higher risk of cancer as compared to the regular public. We're at about a 68% chance that a firefighter is going to have some form of cancer throughout their career into retirement. So this has become a very hot topic across the country. And what's come out of that, and you'll hear some more about that, is this idea of hot transition in cold zones being built in the facilities. And the building that's being proposed meets all those standards that we're trying to get to, as well as separating our cleaning stations where we wash our turnouts, prep our medical gear, do our laundry and all of that kind of stuff. Next slide. Some of the community benefits this project will bring will be replacing the existing infrastructure around. infrastructure around the station, such as the curb ramp and the crosswalk upgrades, as well as a drive-through apparatus bay, which one will help reduce some traffic backup. Currently, we need to back into the station, and we'll provide some safety for our employees who don't have to get off of the fire engine out in front of the station to back the vehicle in. And the new facility will meet all ADA accessibility requirements for the community and our employees. Next slide. So this was a image of the postcard that was sent out for our public outreach meeting, which you've heard some of the details about already. And I think at this point, I'm passing it off to our architect. Thank you.
Chief Lacks, thank you. And commissioners, I'm very pleased to be here with you tonight. I'm Alan Kawasaki from Shaw Kawasaki Architects. The chief mentioned about seismic, and I want to kind of start with that. So your new building will meet what's called the Essential Service Act or Essential Service Facility. So what's happened is buildings that were built before 1986 were not built to withstand a major earthquake. I know that sounds kind astounding, but in 1986, the city of California, because of our high seismic zone, passed a law that said, from that point on, buildings which are for fire stations or essential service facilities will need to withstand a major earthquake. And I think that's pretty much an expectation. People believe that if there is a major earthquake, that they will be served still by their firefighters. Well, that's not the case, except for new stations such as this. And so that's a major, a major point I would make. It definitely benefits the community. Another is this drive-through station capability. As you know, Alameda is very busy, and right now, they're backing into the station. And what we've redesigned the station to do is to be able to come in off of Howard and then drive through the apparatus bay and then go on to Alameda. And that's obviously much safer for the public, as well as for firefighters. The neighborhood has been impacted in terms of parking. So in the morning time, of course, new crews come on and the old ones go off. So we have added parking spaces to help to relieve any congestion that may occur in the morning. We've talked already about the fire health and safety, and I'll go into that more when we look at the plans. And sustainable lead design buildings are very, very important to us and certainly to you. And although this is not a LEED-certified building, per se, I will tell you that this building is being designed to all the highest standards that we employ to all fire stations. And the majority of our stations are, when they are certified, are LEED gold. So we're right there with that, with all of that. One of the reasons why one does not necessarily certify is the cost of the certification. The plaque on the wall costs between $75,000 to $100,000. It doesn't add more sustainability, but gives you a certificate. So things like solar ready, of course, we will have that, stormwater treatment, permeable, all the features that are that are normal. One thing I would say that we're doing that is above normal is the insulation values along the building. And if you can imagine, energy loss or gain really is dependent upon the insulation value that you have. So therefore, by highly insulating this building well above the requirements, is that we are just sipping energy. We're not gobbling it. We're just using minimal amount. And then, of course, ADA capability. Next. So this is the floor plan, and you'll see on the ground floor, as the chief mentioned, we're trying to separate the functions that have to do with the apparatus, which have carcinogens in them, from the living quarters. So in addition to the entry, so you can see from the corner, you come in at a diagonal, and then there's the entry. There's a public restroom or water closet there. There's an exercise room with a very tall ceiling for for the firefighters. And then there's the vertical circulation of an elevator and stair. I know it seems odd to have an elevator, but in fact, that is required by ADA. And then you see the two apparatus. So the drive-through capability, you'll see one of the apparatus has doors both behind it and in front of it, and the other one is a spare, so it only has, occasionally used. It just has the doors in front. So you enter on Howard Street. You drive by the accessible parking stall, and there's a gate in front of you, the security gate that was mentioned by Lisa. And of course, there's, before you get there, there's trash. There's a generator located to the right, and that generator, which is to the right of the gate, currently, there's a generator located on the property line. So what we're doing to assist the neighbor is to move the generator away from the property line and put it into a enclosure. Then you make a right turn into the apparatus bay, and there are additional parking spaces for the crew. The diagonal hatching has to do with permeable pavers, so we're trying to use permeable pavers where we can. The apparatus cannot be supported by permeable pavers, so it's just for the parking for the crew and others. And let's go, let's go upstairs and take a look. So upstairs are the living quarters, and you'll see, you know, kitchen, dining room. There's some chairs, you know, for watching videos or watching training or and or just evening hours. Then you see this round thing. That's the fire pole. So this has an old-fashioned fire pole. In fact, we've specified a really kind of more traditional support system for that. So it's this really interesting thing in the middle of the space. And then you'll see one, two, three, four dorm rooms, including the one next to the stairs. And then there's a captain's office and a crew office. Then, of course, the utilities and things in the upper left. So that front office, the one that's in the very corner, let's take the next slide. That's what you see on the second floor here. So that actually has a nice view offing into the streets. And what we've done is try to give this a very welcoming feeling from the corner of, you know, Howard and Alameda de los Pogos. And as Lisa mentioned, so there is a sort of a tan brick base, which makes it very durable, and then these highly insulated panels that are above. And we think of this as sort of being a mid-century modern kind of building, a little bit like maybe one would see like an Eichler or other buildings of that era. So it has, you know, the sloped roofs, like many of the buildings or most of the buildings in the neighborhood, to make a nod to the to the residential aspect. And then the red doors were something we felt like that's kind of a traditional, you know, fire color. So we've done that. And then you see the, on the corner, there's sort of stepped planters, and those are, those are part of the bio swell and water, you know, stormwater purification system. And then you see the entry to the left. Next. So the red outline here shows the profile of the existing firehouse, and blue, of course, is the new firehouse. And what we've done is depress the building a little bit and lowered it by three feet. And then the top peak is nine feet, so 31 foot 10 inches from grade to the top. And this does a couple of things for us. One, it reduces the bulk relative to the neighbors. It also gives us a flatter ramp coming out of the firehouse onto the street. So that has added safety for the public and the firefighters. So I think that's the next. Oh, the materials, the elevations and materials. So these just show the other, the sides and the back of the building, as well as, of course, you saw the front. And next, the materials, the brick, the metal. There's a metal roof. There's, there's sort of a perimeter CMU, which is a more of a kind of ground or polished CMU. So I think that's it. Thanks.
Right. Thank you very much for those excellent presentations. Before we go to discussion and questions from the commission, we should ask if there's anyone interested in calling in and providing a comment on this item, should consider doing that now. And in the meantime, are there any questions from commissioners of any of the presenters or staff?
Just one technical one for the chief, I guess. During construction, what will apparatus be stored on the street, or how's that going to work?
We're going to relocate that engine crew to Fire Station 13 down on Laurel Street during the construction of the project.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Chief, kind of a similar question. How important is the placement of this firehouse? And how long will it take to construct the new one approximately? I know you haven't did this yet, but just, I'm sure you have some rough idea of the timing. And then, you know, how much of a safety impact is it having that crew downtown as opposed to being further west in the city?
Yeah, thanks for, that's a good question. I'll address the question about the placement of the existing location. It's been really important. It's been a really good location for us. You know, we do have other stations close to us, one on Edmonds Road, Station 10 in Redwood City, Jefferson and Myrtle, and then, of course, our Station 13, and then Station 15 in Belmont at Ralston and Cipriani. And so all of those station locations are actually going to be impacted by the construction of this station. And of course, we'll still have the crew. We did do research. It's going to increase our response times with the relocation by 90 seconds on average. And so we felt that's an acceptable amount of time for us to be able to continue to provide the level of service that we do. But we will see some of those other stations responding in District 16 as the first due company. Like I mentioned, the Station 10 from Redwood City, Station 18 from Edmonds Road, Station 15 from the Belmont, and then, of course, Station 13 with the two engines there. So I hope that kind of answers your question about it. You know, really, this was our best alternative for a temporary site for the crew while we went through that. And the time for construction, you know, ideally, we're going to keep that company all the way there to that last day where they're going to tear the building down, and then we'll relocate them. And I think Alan might be able to answer the question best about exactly what we think the amount of time for this project would take.
I can tell you what what we had originally planned, and of course, it depends also, you know, with your with your council approving the funds for bidding, et cetera. So we will be finishing up and ready, ready to bid in the fall. And it normally takes about three to four months to bid. So in other words, by the end of the year, it's possible that you'll have a contractor in place. And a building of this size typically takes about 12 months, maybe a little bit more. So either the end of '21 or the beginning quarter of '22, that would be my best guess. But I think if I've said anything incorrectly, that's also on the line, and you can add more to that.
Yeah, no, thank you. That was a good answer. Appreciate it.
I have a question for for the architect relating to the to the three-foot grade lowering, which is an interesting, interesting, actually, I haven't, we often get concerns about the height and bulk, but rarely hear about lowering the grade. Is that, is that a pretty exceptional process to do? Is it expensive? It would be my, my first part of the question, and then I'll ask my second part of the question. What, what, how do you deal with that three-foot differential in relation to the neighboring properties? Is there a little retaining wall or is that done in an aesthetic way?
So I can, I can answer both questions, too. So yes, it is, it is done as a means of reducing the bulk of the building. And in terms of cost, yes, there's additional cost to doing that. But the reason, there were multiple reasons for lowering it, one of which, of course, is reduce the bulk. But the other one I mentioned was what we really want also to have is safety as the fire apparatus exit the building. And they're doing so at high speed. They have plenty of things to think about. They've got to look right, got to look left. And and one of the worst things you want is your, your engine naturally accelerating on you as you're trying to get out the door. You don't want to have to slam the brakes on, and you're already on a hill. So having it relatively flat was important. And we felt that right now, the grade going out, it may be at a slope. But the back of the firehouse now is relatively flat. So what we're doing instead is to slope the back. Once we, once we have that parking stall from, for the ADA parking spot, then we slope down about three feet until we get into the door of the fire house. What are we adding? You know, tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands of dollars by, by dropping the building down. And in answer to your question, so regarding retaining walls, the current, the current thought is, we like to have a concrete block, and I mentioned it being machine block fence, you know, usually six feet. I think that's what we have specified as measured from the neighbor's side. But then we have an additional three feet. So our total is about nine feet in height. From our side, it'll just look like a fence, but in fact, three feet of it is a retaining wall.
Thank you. And that's, that's interesting that the grade reduction isn't prohibitively expensive. It's something to think about for, for future buildings where the height and mass is a, is a big deal, and why not just lower it, lower it down a couple of feet to reduce the impact and certainly acknowledge the safety benefit as well here. Thank you.
I did have a comment on the, on the design for the architect. It's very nice. I went to the March open house and got a quick tour of the inside of the existing building, and it does, as someone said in the presentation, look like it's about 20 years old. It looks very dated. And I also had the opportunity to see the materials board up close and personal and see what each of them, you know, all of the stones and metal, et cetera, would look like. And it's very attractive. So the form of the building is less important to me than the, than the function. It's safety and access is the most important, but it's also nice to see that it's well-designed and it looks nice. So thank you for that.
Well, you're welcome. You know, one of the things that we always encourage is, is to actually have the public meetings in the firehouse, because I think public really understands, you can see firsthand. And, and, you know, you're not, you're not, and not asking for anything real extravagant, but, but what's there really is in needing repair.
Any other questions from the commissioners of any of our speakers before we see if there's anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak?
I have one question about the generator. Some, I've been around some of these generators serving large buildings as backup, and boy, are they noisy. What's the decibel level on this guy, and how often is it run?
So I'm going to have to defer to our project architect if he's on. But I believe, as far as when it's run, the chief can mention how often they test it. And as far as the decibels, we have done enough of a study to make sure that it is, you know, less than what's currently there. So chief, you want to talk about how often you test it? And then maybe Austin may know the decibel rating.
Sure. Yeah, the generators actually run automatically once a week for about 20 minutes for a weekly test. Then we usually have them serviced once a quarter or twice a year, where again, they'll be run for a 20, 30-minute period for maintenance purposes. Other than that, they're only running when we lose power at the station.
And I'm guessing, just to build on that generator question, that the generator is sized not only to make sure that the lights and the computers stay on, the control room stays on, but that the garage doors have to open, you know?
Yes, all of that is essential. You know, in the firehouse, we've got to be operational. The other feature I would note is that we have actually been incorporated, asked to incorporate a charging station at the front entry door, so that your public, even if they lose power, you know, we all want our cell phones to work. So there's actually a place where you can sit down and plug your cellphone in and have it charged, as, of course, even whether the firehouse people are there or on, on call.
That's a great idea. I didn't know that. That's a great idea. I didn't know that.
So Austin, are you online? Would you happen to know the answer to the the decibel level?
Hi, everybody. This is Austin with Shaw Kawasaki Architects. The generator in question, the generator that has been proposed by our electrical consultant, has a decibel range that hovers around seventy-two D B I. But that is the generator not inside of the enclosure. So the generator itself sits inside of a sound absorptive and weatherproof enclosure. In addition, the generator and the enclosure will be within a generator enclosure pen, which, as you've seen from the site plan, is adjacent to the fire station itself. So seventy-two D B I is the typical operation sound.
How would that relate to our, I don't know, the D B I scale very well in terms of the impact? We have rules in the city about how loud people's air conditioning systems can be and stuff. Is that is this within that range or is it about, is it measured on a separate?
I know we checked, I know we checked all of your regulations regarding generators, and we were under that amount. Because I think I think the measurement is on the neighbors' property line or, you know. And what happens, of course, is sound falls away at at a, you know, at an exponential level based upon distance. And so any distance you have, plus the additional measures of the specifying low decibel at seventy-two, plus the additional sound absorption materials that we're adding. I'm sure I I know that we're well within your 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 requirements, that that were less than the requirements at the property line. We can actually give you that number because it was, I think, we pulled it up from the manufacturer's testing. If you'd like to have that number.
I I think personally, I'm satisfied with that response. It sounds, it sounds like there wouldn't be a big impact.
One, one additional.
One more.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Yes. One more generator-related question. I'm presuming that generators these days do not require an underground fuel tank, that it comes with its own self-contained unit. And so, and it has, the enclosure will have a secondary containment for a spill. And, you know, can you just say more how all of that works?
These spill is basically, I think that there's a county code related to the spill. I think our civil engineer may be on the line. He may be able to tell us. I don't recall it triggering that that requirement. What was the other aspect of your question?
Well, is the fuel tank integral to?
No, it's, we call it a belly tank. And so that's above grade so that the, you know, it's a steel tank underneath the the generator. And I believe that it's enough to run seventy-two hours. Thereafter, there's a refilling nozzle. And so then a truck can come up and and put more fuel into the into the belly tank. So either Austin or Paul, as far as the spillage containment, are we required to do that by county?
Alan, I would have to defer to Paul on that.
Paul, are you on? No, we'll we'll recheck that, but I'm, I know that we, that's just one of the procedures that we do. And yes, above a certain amount, you have to actually create a basin around the the tank in case there is a puncture or rupture of the tank.
Thank you.
One last question on the on the generator. What is the height of the stack? Diesel exhaust is not something you typically want to see or breathe. And I forgot to look in the panel, and maybe you can help me. Is the exhaust run up the side of the building so that it actually vents on the roof? Or does it vent more at eye level? Can can you help me understand that a little better?
Yeah, Austin, I know he studied, Austin studied that extensively with both both engineers. Can you talk about that, Austin?
Yes, so the overall generator height is approximately ninety-six inches tall. And then there's an additional stack that comes out of the generator. If we are examining the site plan, the generator stack right now would be coming out of the, let me think here, south. There would be the southwest side of the generator. And we did have a long conversation with our mechanical consultants, but also our electrical consultants about how to potentially mitigate exhaust. And based on the research of our mechanical consultants and our electrical consultants, the discharge rate of the of the generator itself would allow it to be pushed up at such a, at such a rate that we would not need to run what we're calling a snorkel along the side of the building and up through the roof. So at this point, the stack is, the generator stack is on the southeast corner, as I mentioned. And our mechanical and electrical consultants have mentioned that it will not be an issue pushing the exhaust up and away from the fire station.
So the south, that that corner is the one furthest away from the building. And so I think just the velocity of of the the exhaust coming up pushes it beyond the building and not into the building or to the to the neighbors.
Correct. Thank you. Any other questions of the speakers before we see if there's anyone waiting in the waiting room wanting to speak from the public?
One question about, you mentioned it's to be solar-ready. Why wouldn't you put solar panels in during the construction?
That's a, that's a great question. We will be able to meet all requirements without the panels. However, the the code only requires solar-ready. But we can put them in anytime. And in fact, we we have provided enough area where we can make it more than than sort of the minimum. If you so choose to go ahead and make that expenditure, you know, at this time. Oh, and the other thing I just want to note, I know, Ellen, you were talking about all-electric. And we typically make the the entire fire station all-electric. With the exception of, there's just a little bit, I mean, like, you know, in the in the kitchen, like a gas range, that sort of thing. But it, the HVAC systems, we don't do heating by by gas. The heating is an electric system. And that also plays into the solar system or the solar panel system. Because what we try to do is 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 make the building so someday we can have something called a net zero building where through PV panels, we could make the building so it's not drawing from P G and E. So I mean, it's a great question regarding the the PV panels. At the moment, our budget doesn't have that in there. But I mean, that's a city decision if you want to go ahead and put those in there. It's it's ready for it.
Well, I would at least encourage you to to weigh the benefits of putting it in now and finding out how many years it might take, take to pay it pay its own way. Thank you.
Yes. We can provide that information to the to the city and they and the city can decide whether they want to make that expenditure now.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Lisa, Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room who wishes to speak?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay, let's give it just a few, another thirty seconds, just to make sure that anyone who wants to call and talk has the opportunity to do that.
While we're waiting, did the staff receive any written comments or and what was the feedback at the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, so the feedback at the neighborhood meeting was mostly favorable, especially from the adjacent neighbors. Some of the concerns that I heard at the meeting were about parking. And, you know, they were very appreciative that the engines now would be able to drive out and didn't have to back into the to the space. So mostly mostly favorable comments. And I don't know, Vatsal, if you've gotten any other comments throughout the course of this project, but planning has not received them.
Vatsal from Public Works, no, we received generally favorable comments as well. They appreciated the fact that we were lowering the building to minimize the height of the building. That was the biggest concern. And the other one was kind of bringing the residential feel of a fire, I'm sorry, bringing a fire station design that was more residential feeling. So we tried to incorporate some some of those elements in in the design. But we also wanted to make sure that we made it very clear that it was a fire station and it served the fire station purpose.
Let me just check in. Sarah, anyone in the waiting room who'd like to speak?
No, Commissioner Garvey.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. We can now, as a commission, enter into discussion. Who would like to start?
Well, I I can start by saying I think it's a really good-looking building. The design is aesthetically very pleasing to me, and it does reflect its function. The red doors and the fire, the flagpole out front. And I can't help it, but I was very happy to learn that there's still a fire pole in in the building. Somehow that makes it feel tickled. But overall, it looks like it's a asset to the to the community and it's good-looking and very thoughtfully designed to upgrade the functionality.
Yes, I I would echo all that. And I I was surprised to learn that this building had been has been in use for some sixty years already. So it seems, and it doesn't meet the code. So I can't see that we would want to do anything but approve for its construction and funding, which the council has to do as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, great. I'll chime in. Yeah, it's a handsome building. I really appreciate the way the glass has been placed and the emphasis on the corner so that it has a connection to the neighborhood. I always liked that when, you know, folks like firemen and other public servants can feel connected to their community and the community can feel connected to them. So I appreciate that approach to the design. I will say I will miss the old building a little bit. As a boy growing up in the Midwest, I think Emergency One was one of my favorite television shows. And I drive by this station almost every day. And, boy, it sure does remind me of that old, I think, Los Angeles County Firehouse that they filmed that in. So I think I will miss that when it when it leaves. But it certainly has served its purpose, and I can see this will certainly meet our needs much better. I will say that by driving by it every day, I definitely appreciate the the drive-through nature of this design, watching those fire crews. I I kind of like it. We all come to a screeching halt and they have to flash all their lights and then, you know, back in. And, you know, I kind of like watching the big trucks driving around. But there's a lot of my fellow commuters who I I don't think really appreciate it. And, you know, these are big trucks, so someone always has to jump out of the cab and go back and ground guide it. And, you know, no one wants to be walking around in Alameda in the middle of rush hour. So I the drive-through nature will reduce its impact upon our transportation grid for sure. And will also be safe for for the crews. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of this project. And and I do like also that it's coming off of its little hill there. That makes a lot of sense. So it seems like we've really thought to the long-term nature of this design. And hopefully, some solar panels show up in the not-too-distant future. They'll certainly be there for a long time.
Yeah, I'll chime in. I too, like Commissioner Dugan, drive by the fire station probably every day. And I'm excited to see the news station go in. Because I live fairly close by, I think it will service me. So I'm excited about the safety and the upgrades and and access in and out being easy and quick. And the building, as I mentioned, looks looks really nice. So I I appreciate all the work that has gone into this project.
My my only add to all of the good comments, my fellow commissioners, would be I do appreciate the thoughtfulness of relocating the generator. And I'm sure the neighbors appreciate that as well. And, you know, it, hopefully, it won't be needed much. But the idea of being able to walk down the hill and charge a cellphone in a moment of need is a nice touch. So well done. It it's a good-looking addition to the community. And we'll look forward to it getting started and and finished.
All right, I will entertain a motion on this issue. Lisa, do we have the motion up on the screen?
There.
Yeah.
Sure. I will move that the Planning Commission grant approval for design review for a new fire station building at twelve eighty Alameda de las Polgas, APN zero five one one three one three hundred, for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the conditions and the code compliance certificate.
I will second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, moving on to item seven B. This is a consider recommending the city council adopt significance thresholds for vehicle miles traveled. And Lisa, I see that this item has been continued to a date uncertain. Help me out here. Do we need a motion and a roll call to continue this?
I think it would be good of the commission, for the record, to go ahead and make a motion second, and I'll take the roll.
All right, can I have a motion then from someone to continue this to a date uncertain?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ruth?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, moving on to agenda item eight, reports, correspondence and general information. Eight A, report on recent city council actions. Lisa, anything for us this evening?
There's nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item B, and Planning Commission comments or reports. Anything from my fellow commissioners? I don't have anything.
Yeah, sure. I will give an update to the commission. I think many of us were surprised last week when Mark Olberg decided not to run this year for the city council. So I just wanted to update my fellow commissions. I got encouraged by several folks, and I can honestly say I wasn't necessarily looking to add anything extra to my year. But I have officially thrown my head in the ring for city council. So I don't anticipate that affecting my ability to fully participate as a planning commissioner. But as a courtesy, I did just want everyone to know that.
Thank you very much for letting us know. I I appreciate it. I I did hear that Mark Olbert was choosing not to run, so it seems a perfect opportunity.
Yep, congratulations on your new adventure. Good luck.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate that. And honestly, it's been my service here and the awareness of all the development that's coming to our east side and elsewhere in town that definitely wants me to lean forward and at least help the, you know, learn from the community and think about how that should unfold in the coming years.
You'll be a great councilman, John.
Thank you, Don. That means a lot.
All right, moving on to item eight C, correspondence. Lisa, anything?
No, Chair Garvey, staff has not received any correspondence for the commission this evening.
Any planning staff comments, reports or updates on current? Any planning staff comments, reports or updates on current projects?
Yes, I just wanted to let the commission know that our next public hearing is scheduled for Monday, August 3. And we only have one item on the agenda for that hearing, which is a proposed mixed-use ground floor service, upper stories, offices at 993 Laurel. That'll be a brand new building. And so that is going to be presented before you that evening. And then following that, the commission will be able to enjoy a short break with the cancellation of the regular meeting of August 17. And then a return on Tuesday, I think it's September, I want to say 3, but let me just double check. Actually, no, that would be September 8, actually. No, I'm sorry. But that would be, I'll double check on that. I think it's.
I think the day, I think Labor Day is the 7th on a Monday.
That's right. So the first Monday of the month, yeah, that would be the 8th.
Okay.
I got a little bit confused there for a second. Yeah, so that's when the commission would be returning after the break on scheduled for August 17. And that is all I have for you this evening.
All right, if there's nothing additional, the planning commission meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Ellen. Way to go.
That's worth it.
Good meeting. Yeah, great job.
Good first meeting.